Just put in the mailbox. At this time, I called the Neighborhood Jobs and Housing Committee to order, and I asked the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Harris.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so, this is a different day. In all the years I have been on council, I have never had anyone ever challenge a sale of real estate by asserting that they currently own the property. I got that email today, and because I got the email today, I didn't really have a whole lot of time to do a whole lot of work on it. But in fairness, I believe that we have to let the folks who are asserting that they own the property come forward and speak their piece. I'll then be seeing if we can get a response from Corporation Counsel on the record. And I am, it is my intention to hold this item today for the sale of real estate. It is my hope that after this conversation, if there's any need for any further conversation, Corporation Counsel and the folks who are contesting the sale can have a conversation and we can move forward with this item during our regular council meeting coming forward. So, at this time, we have some folks who are stating that they own, well, their family used to own forty-eight Barton Street. So if you guys could step forward, come to the mic and turn on the mic, and share with us what you want to share.
Good evening, my name is Robert Smith Rapley, and I appear to you before today as a representative of the parcel of forty-eight Barton Street. I respectfully submit the statement in formal opposition to the proposed sale of my family's property listed as unbuildable and slated for transfer for the nominal sum of one dollar to the adjacent landowners. I am open to any questions regarding this matter.
Could you say it a little louder and just a little slower, that last part?
I am open to any questions regarding this matter.
Okay, so, it's your position that, so, could you just give a little history of this vacant lot?
The lot actually belonged to my father, he had purchased it in the early two thousands for ten thousand dollars. He passed away in twenty-eleven, and his will, he was my, I was supposed to get it when I was thirty years old. My stepmom was supposed to take care of the house, I ended up going to prison, she wasn't paying no taxes on the house. She ended up leaving the house, I came home from prison, and the house was just there, and I was asking what was going on, I tried to pay stuff on it, but nobody was telling me the way to go about taking care of stuff. Then I went back to jail, and my sister was the next in line, Lisa Dorsey. And she had passed away recently, a year or two ago, from cancer.
Sorry for your loss.
So, I really didn't know everything that was going on about the house or anything, because nobody was telling me, because I was supposed to be the little brother. But, and I'm supposed to get the house when I'm thirty years old, and everything when I was thirty years old, which is next week.
Okay, so, there was a house there, apparently there was a fire, you guys were saying earlier?
Yes, it was a house originally there, early, like, twenty-twenty-two, I think, that it got burnt down, somebody had set my house on fire, actually. And, yeah, it got burnt down to the ground and stuff like that, and, uh, I didn't know, like, my sister, I was telling my sister and stuff like that, she was kept saying she was gonna take care of it, but she's not letting me know what was going on, the whole time she was dealing with her cancer. So, I don't, I didn't know really too much about what was going on until now. And when I went down and my sister, Sarita had called me, said I could go down to the county clerk office before they was putting it on auction or something, and they said that I had to pay, it was four thousand dollars, a lien on the house, for back property taxes for like four thousand dollars. I was cleared, if I cleared that, then they'll take it out of, from the auction and stuff like that. I was going through some financial stuff at the time, and going through custody to get my kids and things, so I wasn't able to take care of that at the moment. And my sister, who put me onto the matter, I asked her for it, but she was having to take care of her house in Long Island. So, things were kind of a little bit riffraffy at the time, but now I'm situated to take care of things that I need to.
Okay, so, so, house caught fire in twenty-twenty-two, and it sounds like we probably demoed it shortly thereafter, that sound about right?
Correct.
So it's been a vacant lot since about twenty-twenty-three, maybe, sound about right? Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three? Okay, so, it's been a vacant lot since twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and you're, you're, you're standing here before us today, and you're saying you want to own that lot, is that what you're saying to us?
Yes, I would like to take some type of ownership in that lot, you know what I'm saying, because I feel selling it for a dollar is not right to me, you know what I'm saying? When it's like, the house really meant something, because my dad, who, my dad who owned the house, he wasn't just a regular person, he lived on the street, he was a community leader. Everybody had talked to him, for anything or any problems on the street, they had to talk to him. He the one who I got the speed humps and stuff on the street, so the cars would stop speeding. So it was like, it was like a little bit of respect, everybody knew my dad on the street, and, um, the neighbor, it was, he really ain't like us like that, the one you trying to sell the other parcel to, the next door neighbor and stuff, and it's like, I don't, four dollars is just not saying right with me, and I could like literally try to make that to a community garden for my dad, and stuff like that, for the community too.
Okay.
How you guys doing? Chad Anderson, consultant, this is my cousin, I know a lot of you, but, ownership, but as well as to see like how we kind of spoke prior, to see what are the steps moving forward? Is there any potentialities to see, you know, what can possibly be done, if not ownership, I think that's just what we're kind of here, as well as, you know, the possible ownership today, kind of uncovered.
Okay, well, so, and on that note, we'll move over to Corporation Counsel. Corporation Counsel, can you share some perspective on the ownership sta, the, the ownership status of the property, as in, so, do we own it, do they own it, who owns it? And kind of the, what our process is for establishing and acquiring the ownership of this property at this time?
Sure, so the short answer is the city owns it. This parcel of land was part of the twenty-twenty-four tax foreclosure action. We can bring those tax foreclosure actions against parcels of real property that have been tax delinquent for a year or more. That is a court proceeding, so everybody who's subject to that court proceeding gets notice of the proceeding, there are a series of notices that go to owners, to any lien holders, creditors, et cetera. And that ultimately ends in a judgment of foreclosure, which allows the city to take properties to a sale. We got the judgment of foreclosure on this parcel in November of twenty-twenty-four, and went to a sale on this parcel and a number of others. There were no bidders at the auction, so the city took title to it. Title was recorded, the deed was recorded in the city's favor on March thirty-first of this year. And at this point, the only party with an interest in the property is the city of Rochester, because through the process of tax foreclosure, any other interests are wiped away. We do have a process for former owners who would like to buy back a property from the city, it's not something we do frequently, but it's not the same as a sale to a third party, so in this instance, right, we're selling for a dollar. We wouldn't be able to do that with a former owner, we would have to basically give them the property back and bring into existence the tax lien and any other liens that encumbered the property. Otherwise, you would be basically waiving the taxes and any other liens on the property, kind of fraudulently, right? If the former owner got it back without paying all of that, so that would bring into existence all of those, those former costs.
So, to recap, if they, if the former owner wanted to take ownership of the property, they would have to be ready to pay all of the back taxes? And the demolition fees, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we'd have to take a look at the property, I also only got notice of this a few hours ago, but we'd have to see what other liens were on there. So, so often we're talking about city taxes, we're talking about county taxes, there may have been past years' tax liens that were sold to third-party lien holders. Demo cost, as you say, would, if not paid right away, would be added to taxes. And then there may be other mortgage holders who had interest in the property, and they would have to be satisfied as well.
Okay, so, like I said, so, like I said, I'm gonna hold the item, it's my hope that y'all will be able to get together, have a conversation, and we'll be able to get this addressed and dealt with by, by the time we get to our next committee meeting, yeah, Councilmember Gruber?
Yeah, just, just one question for the administration, what is the proposed use of the buyer, the proposed buyers, what's the proposed use? Screen space, parking lot? Or is there?
Well, they were gonna split it in half.
Looks like two adjacent property owners are gonna split the land.
But, I guess my question is, no one's trying to do, no one's trying to build anything on the land, it's just, it's adding to neighboring spaces.
Yes, it would be adding space to each property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, comments, or concerns, we're gonna move on from this item. Gentlemen, thank you for coming in and having a conversation, I'm sure Corporation Counsel and our folk, they're all in, you guys, we're all in the same email, so I'm sure they'll be reaching out to you to have a conversation with you, you know, so we'll go forward from there. We understand your emotional attachment to the property, I, I only thing I would offer to you is, because it sounds like you're feeling some kind of way about it being sold for a dollar, I would only humbly submit to you, please don't feel a certain kind of way about it being sold for a dollar, it is not a comment on the value of your family, or your memories, or your father's ownership of the property. This is just our policy for disposing of these small lots to get them basically in the hands of people who are gonna care for them. So, and it's, so, and it's not personal, it's not just about you, also, through our auction proc, through our auction process, not only does that apply to vacant lots, that applies to houses, that applies to a range of properties. So it, you know, even though y'all are the ones here talking to us about this, it's not just you, this is our process, we follow the process, they put out the notice, that we're gonna, but because you reached out, we're gonna talk to you, we're gonna see what, they'll have a conversation. So the item's not, so we're not voting on the item today, we'll be going forward from there, and we're just gonna go on to the next item, all right, gentlemen? All right, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, introductory number two fifty-seven, sale of sixty Excel Drive and five-ten Norton Street, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Moved in second, and now we vote, all in favor of introductory number two fifty-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
I know we just voted on this, but I do have one follow-up question.
Go ahead, please.
Related to this, just wondering if we can get a sense of, I know we're voting on selling this property, but what the overall timeline is for the future development of the site? And that could be in writing in the future, thank you.
Yep, thanks for the question, put it in writing.
So, we moved it, we voted on it, and now we're moving on to the next one, all right. Introductory number two fifty-eight, land purchase option agreement, one, two through twelve, Clarence Park, questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Gruber?
So, does the project change at all, and I don't know who wants to answer this, the administration, Reach, PCHO?
Why, why, why don't we, why don't we start with the administration?
Commissioner.
Uh, thank you, yes, the project does not change at all, the project is still the same project that we had seen before, which includes the creation of a pocket neighborhood and twelve tiny house-style dwellings, as was originally proposed.
Yeah, Chairman, if you're okay, I'd like, I'd like, I'd like to hear from, uh, Pat, would you mind sharing from your perspective, you're welcome to come up to the mic?
Hi, Pat Tobin, Chair of Reach. It won't change, so we're negotiating right now with a potential transfer of the property, maintaining the exact same development scheme. And same market, same for the chronically homeless, program wouldn't change.
And the last time we had talked about this project in this chambers, all the zoning was done, it was a matter of getting the financing together from Reach. Can you give just an update on where you are with that?
It's one of the reasons that we're moving towards another agency to assist for strength in their balance sheet that can provide the financing, but everything else is done, shovel-ready. And we're just looking to extend for two years so that we can get it done.
Okay, no further questions for me.
Okay, and so, since we heard from Reach, we might as well hear from PCHO, we got somebody here from PCHO? Hey, what a surprise, good to see you, sir.
How are you? I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think PCHO is in a position to support this project. We have done two other projects that are smaller-scale projects and been fairly successful with them. One with Flower City, and currently with Cecilia's Place on Central Park. They're different projects, obviously, but I think that this project is unique in its capacity, and we have very good standing with the state and with the federal government. So, our audits are clean, and, and that's what we need to get through these state projects.
All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns? No, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Actually, I do, I'm sorry.
Hang on, come on back.
Chairman, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, come on, you got it.
I, I, let me think about who the project is, or who the question is geared towards. I guess, so, when these buildings are done, let's, let's fast forward, financing happens, buildings are complete, what is PCH, PCHO's, PCHO's role in the actual management of the exist, of the facilities?
Presently, we would be overseeing the service delivery, the management of the property, all the contracts related to snow removal, pest removal, et cetera, repairs, ownership of the project, and contractual agreements with any security that would be on-site. Our goal is to make sure this is a safe, but affordable, community space.
And, and PCHO, assuming, I'm assuming there's still a lot of legal work to do for the, for the dissolution of Reach, but PCHO feels confident that you will have the capacity to do those things you just described?
Yeah, uh, we, we do, however, you know, we may hire a property management company that has more experience than we do in managing repairs.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten that far, just to be transparent, we would want to do this with a company that's sensitive to the population. Similarly to the company that we contract with for security, they're trauma-informed, they're skilled at de-escalation techniques, they have a, a, a management plan that works for us, and they're a minority-owned business. So, all those things are important to us, and they also work within the regulations and requirements for the state, which would be the primary funding source.
Thanks, the only thing I would just add, it's more of a, it's a comment out of question, given that this is the first project of this, that the city has zoned and approved, and allowed us to move forward, I think what's most important is that when NBD or the administration or council is, you know, assuming these are built and done in a year, two years' time, and we say, you know what, we need to make sure the snow removal actually is a challenge, or some things aren't happening well with the, with the garbage pickup, we need to have, make sure we have someone who's ready to answer the call and be there for us, so that this goes smoothly, so that we can do more of these moving forward. And I just, I, I hope, I mean, I know, Nick, obviously, we've worked lo, long enough together, I know you guys do a lot in this community, but I really hope as part of the, whatever kind of legal framework you all are talking about for the transition, it's just clear that where the buck lies, so the city has a person, a place to call, and, and make sure these things are resolved.
Ultimately, the buck will, will lie with us, that's, we really think that that's our wheelhouse. You know, we, we hope that the project doesn't change over time, but construction costs, and, so, we're really looking at this project tooth and nail to better make sure that we can sustain it, make this the best first tiny home project that we can make it, so that we can do more. If we don't do well with the first one, then we're not gonna do any second ones.
Yep.
So we really need to make this perfect.
Amen, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments or concerns? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Moved in second, and now we vote, all in favor of introductory two fifty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay, introductory passes. Introductory two fifty-nine, donation of real estate, portion of seventy-one Mount Hope Avenue, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Moved in second, and now we vote, all in favor of introductory number two fifty-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay, introductory passes. Introductory two sixty, agreement, Next Corps Inc., Economic Development Services, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Moved in second, and now we vote, all in favor of introductory number two sixty, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay, introductory passes. Introductory two sixty-one, planned development district number eight, Midtown Athletic Club, questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Gruber?
Yeah, I, I apologize in advance, because I'm not particularly prepared to ask this question, Patrick, but it's, it's for you ultimately. So, a quick, quick dive into history, when there was, when we had the dome, the tennis bubble dome on the inner loop, baked into that land use agreement was the ability for city rec programs to be able to use that, those courts on a fairly regular basis. I'm curious if there is, when we're being asked to, and I'll just say since then, since the dome was gone, I've asked several different places that have indoor courts, including the place that is currently asking us for a variance for some use of their space for city rec programs, and have not gotten a very promising answer quite yet from anyone, a little bit here, a little bit there. But I'm curious, when we're being asked, because that is what's happening here, we're, we are being asked by Midtown to provide, is it, is it, are they asking for a variance specifically? A modification? That may be an NBD question?
Yeah, that's an NBD question.
Would someone be able to give me a clarity on what the ask is?
Yes, they're asking for an amendment to a portion of the zoning code that regulates this particular planned development district to allow the construct, really not, not the construction of a building, but the permitted use to be in a newly constructed building instead of only existing buildings.
Got it, so I guess I'm, I just want to ask from a, from a legal perspective, Patrick, when we're being asked for such a thing, is there any kind of precedent to be able to also ask for use of facilities?
Yeah, I think different situations would allow that, and I don't know if this is one of them off the top of my head, but we can get back to you in writing.
Okay, I, I will actually put the question in writing to you, but I'd love an answer to that.
Yep, great.
And, and Chairman Patterson, I'm not, I'm not asking you to necessarily hold this item, but I do think that there are, there are a lot of, you know, the city, the city and the YMCA together run the Love Fifteen Program with, with a hundred-plus city youth learning to play tennis, and they have great opportunities and great infrastructure in the summer when they can be outdoors, and right now, there is nowhere for them to go. We have, none of our rec centers offer any indoor space for kids to play racket sports. And this is a place in the city with beautiful, beautiful indoor tennis courts, and I'd love to consider if there's a way that we can do something for the youth of our city as we're being asked to do this.
Is there anyone here from the Midtown Athletic Club?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Jerry Goldman, I'm with the Woods Oviette office, and I'm the attorney and agent for Midtown Athletic. We had not heard this issue before. My understanding was, is that what we're dealing, well, I can tell you, what we're dealing with is a basic text amendment to try to remove what is, frankly, decrepit building, which is owned by our neighbor, and replace it with another building on the property line, which will have the effect of helping the Gould Street neighbors out on, on not having traffic go down Gould Street from that, it will be accessible only to the apartments directly. It's a very basic text amendment, because right now, storage buildings are allowed, but only in the existing building, it's only to allow it in a freestanding building. I understand the councilman's question, it's something that, that we can take back, but I, I think that it's not necessarily something which is germane to this particular issue.
I, I certainly appreciate and can accept that, that argument, I'm still gonna frame a question to, to our Corporation Counsel, and if you're open, I'll, I'll frame it to you as well, I, I think, I don't want to overcomplicate what is, to your point, a fairly simple amendment, it's not what my, it's not what my desire is. My desire is, I would have loved for, for this type of stuff to be worked out in just some kind of basic questions that I had for Midtown Athletic Club over the years that have not been answered, and this is just an opportunity to maybe get some answers, so I'll, I'll work on it.
Okay, okay, I'd be more than glad to entertain, and if you want to copy me on any inquiries, feel free to do that.
I will, I know how to reach you.
I, I think you know where to find me, and if there are any questions from anyone else, we'd be glad to answer them as well.
Seeing no other questions or comments, up, just mentioned for now, since I'm sure that Councilmember Gruber will be getting in contact with you with his questions and concerns, I am positive that we will, I would be very surprised if we didn't vote this out at our full council meeting, but just to facilitate conversation, I'm gonna hold the item for now, and I'm sure I would be very surprised if we didn't vote this out at our full council meeting.
I'm certainly not asking for it to be held whatsoever.
I know, I know you aren't, but I'll hold it anyway, and so, you guys can have that conversation, and I'm sure we'll be able to get this work done. You know, it's not gonna change anything in two weeks, you know, but I'm sure that we'll be able to get a conversation done, and I, I would be very surprised if we didn't vote this out at the full council meeting when it comes up, so.
Okay.
No worries, no problems.
Certainly, we appreciate your consideration, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, so, introductory number two eighty-six, HUDLED grant applica, application submission, this is fabulous, this is wonderful, totally in support of it, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Moved in second, and now we vote, all in favor of introductory number two eighty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. With that, the Neighborhood Jobs and Housing Committee stands adjourned, and I ask the clerk to call to order the Aurora Review Committee.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Harris.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. URA-7 naming a qualified and eligible developer ambulance fleet management base in the Norton Street Urban Renewal Area. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I need a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Moved in second, and now we vote all in favor of URA-7. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. URA-7 passes. URA-8, acceptance of a real estate donation, portion of 71 Mount Hope Avenue. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I need a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Moved in second, and now we vote all in favor of URA-8. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. URA-8 passes. With there being no other work before the URA Review Committee, we stand adjourned.
Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call the People Parks and Public Works Committee to the order, and I ask the clerk to call the world.
Vice President Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lightfoot. Councilmember Lupien. Councilmember Patterson. President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
For the record, I'd like to, I wish that we were joined here by Councilmember Gruber and Councilmember Martin. Now, we will proceed to move the business of the committee. Introductory number 262, authorizing a professional service agreement related to the Blue Cross Arena Ice Plant Replacement Project. Any questions, comments, or concerns? I need a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 263, authorizing consolidating funding grant applications agreements. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 264, adopting determinations and findings relating to acquisitions of land parcels and fee and temporary easements for street purposes for Dewey Avenue and Emerson Street Reconstruction Project. Any questions, comments, or concern?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 265, authorizing the traffic flow, a change in tra, I'm sorry, a change in traffic flow and alteration of pavement widths relating to the Center City Courtyard Project at 99 West Main Street. A public hearing to be held on Thursday, July 17, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Just question here. So, could we get a sense of, I think it said it was refuse-related, but what exactly is happening here? What's changed that requires us to make this, these changes?
Commissioner, briefly, if you can, or in writing.
Yeah, this is Dominic Vecchetti, manager of Street Design Division. I can answer this. So, the outside lane closest to the redevelopment area would be used as a loading area to pick up refuse for the development. And the street has been closed now for well over 12 months. Traffic's been flowing well, so we did do analysis that we can go with a one-way northbound conversion without having any impacts to traffic flow in the area.
Got it. So, this would be the street that is basically adjacent on the west side of the new development. Is that correct?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Between Broad and Main.
Thank you. And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries. Introductory number 266, authorizing an alteration of pavement relating to the Monroe Ave, I mean, the Monroe Community College Downtown Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project. A public hearing to be held Thursday, July 17, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Gruber.
Can, so ultimately, we're narrowing the street for pedestrian changes. Can, are there other kind of highlights to the work that MCC is doing? I know it's ultimately an MCC project, but anything that you can share?
Yep, so this is, we've been working closely with MCC and the Monroe County Department of Transportation on this project for quite a while now. It is mainly a pedestrian improvement project. It's adding some curb bumpouts to shorten pedestrian crossing distances at two existing crosswalks in front of the college, one of the mid-block crossings and one in the corner. And also provide a drop-off area for students in between those two crosswalks. So, we'll be getting rid of one of the three travel lanes that runs through that area and converting it to a drop-off.
That area. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 267, authorizing alteration of pavement width related to the Route 33A Chali Ave Over Erie Canal Bridge Replacement Project. A public hearing to be held on Thursday, July 17, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Questions, comments, or concern? Now, I'll start off with a question. This project is expanding the lanes, right? Could you talk a little bit about what that would mean and why?
So, this is a New York State DOT project, it's a New York State DOT-owned bridge over the canal. It's my understanding it's reached its serviceable life, and they're looking to widen the lanes a little bit over the bridge, not add any additional lanes, but they are going to be adding some shoulder slash bike lanes. So, that's the reason for the widening. It's a little bit wider travel lanes and then shoulder space for.
So, it won't be protected bike lanes, it's just more room?
Well, bicyclists will be on the street, pedestrians will be behind railings and barriers.
Got it. Then, I also have a question about the detour. I saw that you guys put in there the detour pattern. And can you talk a little bit more about what that would look like?
Yep, so the proposed detour was used actually in 2016 when they had a temporary bridge closure for some emergency repairs. Utilizes Genesee Park Boulevard and Brooks Avenue as the detour route.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I need a motion in a second.
Move it.
No additional questions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 268, authorizing a professional service agreement for hydraulic model service, support services. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Need a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 268, authorizing a professional service agreement related to the lead service line replacement project. Questions, comments, concerns? Need a motion in a second?
Move it. I'm excited to see this. Continue.
269 lead line.
Yep.
Yep.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 270, authorizing grant agreement appropriation for the bipartisan infrastructure law, lead signs, lead service line replacement project, federal fiscal year 2024. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 271, a bond ordinance of City of Rochester, New York, authorizing issuance of $14 million bonds of said city to finance a portion of the cost of the bipartisan infrastructure law, lead service line replacement project, federal fiscal year 2024. Questions, comments, or concerns? I need a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 272, a bond ordinance of City of Rochester, New York, authorizing issuance of $2,000, $2 million, I'm sorry, $2,234 of bonds of said city to finance the acquisition of 20 special services and street maintenance vehicles.
Question.
Councilmember, President Melendez.
Yeah, so the question is, for the 20 vehicles that we have, that we're replacing in service, what do we end up doing with those? I mean, we decommission them, and do we sell them for parts? Do we hold them? What's the process after that?
Yeah, we generally sell them as part of our auction. Some of them are a little bit very outdated, so I don't know if we get much for them, but we do put them up for auction, ones that we think that we'll get a return for.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you. I believe there's a federal program which allows for reimbursement based upon the environmental friendliness of the vehicles that we're purchasing. Are we looking at that program for these vehicles?
Yes, we do. And we did just purchase a couple of vehicles through a grant.
Okay.
Along with some landscaping-type, you know, battery-powered equipment.
Right. So, we're utilizing that program, and we're going to utilize that program for this too? Because it's like.
We're looking for as many grants as we can get to buy equipment and EV equipment is kind of where that money is at right now.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
No additional questions? Councilmember Gruber.
I see that we're going to be purchasing three sidewalks, snow and ice control vehicles. Just curious, is that, does that mean that we're going to have, is the plan for there to be a reduction in the number of subcontractors we have? We're going to do more of it in-house ourselves, or is three what we have always had?
This current budget, this current budget, we will remain the same. We do 10, 10 of the sidewalk plows rather than having them contracted.
10 we do ourselves.
10 routes we do ourselves.
Got it. So, we're just replacing the three oldest of those vehicles.
Yes, and we also, as contractors, can no longer perform, we take those on.
Got it. Thank you.
No additional questions? Need a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 273, authorizing a grant agreement and budget amendment related to the Rochester City Youth Baseball Cultural Exchange Project. Disclosure, Councilmember Gruber serves as an ex-officio board member for the International Sister Cities of Rochester. He must disclose only and can participate in deliberations and vote. Questions, comments, or concern? Councilmember Martin.
Yes, could you share information about, and this can be in writing, about the youth exchange cultural program, including the context in which youth have traveled to the various countries listed in recent years? And also, could we coordinate and schedule a work session sometime this year to learn more about the program from the president?
Any additional questions?
Just a comment.
Councilmember Patterson.
This is very cool. Very happy to see that we're doing this. Impressed. Well done. Thank you.
Need a motion in a second?
I have another comment, too.
Councilmember, President Melendez.
No worries. So, one, I want to go to Dominican Republic, by the way. I just put that out there. But the, I'm assuming this is also Angel Alisea is involved in some way? I mean, he's been doing this for years and the community, and so it's exciting to see it happen on the city end now. So, can anyone speak to the programmatic part of this and how it all happened?
Yeah, Angel is a part of the program. When we had, when we were approached by International Sister Cities of Rochester to think about how we could engage youth from the city in Puerto Plata, he was the first person that came to my mind. So, you know, we developed a tryout, a year-long vetting system with practices, sessions to learn about the country, and it was phenomenal. It was phenomenal. We just returned from our second trip on July 1st, and, you know, the parents had an awesome time. The kids had an awesome time. We did bring back two wins for Rochester. Looking at the competition and how serious they are about baseball, our kids got an opportunity to learn that in some other countries, baseball is a way of life, not just an extra career.
Especially in the Dominican Republic.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great. And I just want to, my council colleagues, for your benefit, Angel was doing this as a volunteer for the Rochester Hispanic Youth Baseball League. He would bring a team from the Dominican Republic pretty much every year to come play at Don Samo Torres Park on North Platte Avenue. So, it's exciting to see us also involved the other way and visiting. So, great. Thank you.
I'd like to add that Sister Cities done all their projects with Puerto Plata in the past, I know, right? So, it's good to see them. Need a motion in a second?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 274, authorizing an mandatory agreement and budget amendment related to the ESL Federal Credit Union Community Impact Erase Grant. Any questions, comments, or concern?
Comment.
Councilmember Patterson.
Much like my other comment, very well done. Happy to see that you guys are doing this. Well done.
Any additional comments? Need a motion in a second? Councilmember Martin.
Yes, could you provide a breakdown of how the funds would be used to support this program in writing? Hopefully, something similar to how the funds are broken down in intro 275, where the exact amount for the specific projects are included.
Thank you.
Need a motion in a second?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 275, authorizing agreement appropriations and budget amendment for the New York State Department of Health Comprehensive Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention Grant. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Need a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 276, authorizing a grant agreement with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for public market improvements. Questions, comments, or concerns? Need a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 277, authorizing agreements and appropriation related to the New York State Department of Health Sexual Risk Avoidance Education Grant Program. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Gruber.
Thanks. Are the two grants that were listed for this work, 275 and 277, is the total dollar amount, is there a reduction from what we've seen in previous years?
No, this is consistent with what we've seen in the previous years. There has been no reduction thus far.
Okay, and if I, my recollection is that there have been times where we've had federal grants for this purpose and state grants. I don't know if they usually kind of co-mingle and they exist at the same time, but is there any concern about, in terms of the stability of the number of educators we have doing this work out in the community? Is there any concern about any governmental cuts right now?
We haven't heard anything from the state or the feds indicating that as of right now, so we are definitely keeping our fingers and toes crossed to ensure that is the way.
Thank you.
I need a motion in a second?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 287, authorizing an mandatory agreement to provide veterinary service for Rochester Animal Services. Any questions, comments, or concern? Like I said, I only have a comment or a question. This will provide veterinary service for this upcoming year. service for this upcoming year, correct? And is this going to be the plan that we will contract out continuously? Or are we planning to continue to search for a veterinarian?
We are continuing to search to recruit a veterinarian. However, right now, we don't have one in the queue, so this is getting us through until we decide how we're gonna move forward. It is a conversation that we're having with our budget team. Is this something we build into the budget moving forward? We budget in per diem fees in lieu of a staff veterinarian if we're just not getting one, because there is a difference in the amount of budget we need for this.
Got it. So, and then when you guys look at the budget going forward, will you guys add more to, to the salary, or is it, are you guys gonna be looking at the salary that's offered for that, for that position?
That is something we're also looking at. We actually meet with our recruiter, HR, myself, and Commissioner Green are meeting with our recruiter, I think, next week, and that is something that we're going to bring up again. We bring this up every time we speak to our recruiter. Is our salary price range competitive enough to recruit?
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilmember, President Melendez.
Yeah, so just in the same vein, I don't know if we, so we increased the salary range in last year's budget that we just approved, well, this year's budget technically. So I guess at some point, there's a question of, you know, is it, and I know that we're in the structure of government, the confines of government per se, in terms of how we structure this, but the value of increasing the pay for this position versus contracting these services out over and over again, at some point, there's gonna be a cost-benefit analysis that needs to be done, because we continue to go out for services, and it feels like if, the answer is we just need X number of dollars more in salary, I think that's probably, I guess there's not really a question. There's a comment in here that if we could really do a benefit analysis to this issue, I would hope that, you know, we would have a conversation with council about whatever is needed to get this done, because certainly this is something that is a high priority for, for all of us, and I think for the entire administration as well as the community. So we want to be supportive.
Absolutely. Yep. I think, you know, with the meeting coming up next week, we'll get an update and certainly react to what that feedback.
And one other, one other comment for consideration, and I may have mentioned this before in the past, but, you know, Cornell is really the, the local entity that has students that are in this field, and I wonder if there's any possibility of some partnerships down the road. I know that takes time to develop, but for RAS to be a location that students could provide some services. I don't know the logistics or the legality of those issues. You know better than I, but certainly something that I would hope that we at least explore. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
So my question is for Patrick. Procedurally, so let's say we do decide at some point that we are interested in raising the salary for the veterinarian, what would be the procedure for council to do that?
I have to look at specifics of the title, and I can get back to you in writing on that.
Sounds good. Thank you. And thank you, Stacy.
Any additional question? I need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So with no further business, the People Parks and Public Works Committee stands adjourned. Have a good day.